This is, uh, the time is now six thirty exactly. Uh, I'm two, three, four members of the South Border President. Uh, and we'll begin this meeting with this, with the, uh, political leaders. Political leaders to the flag, the United States of America. If you're a supporter, which just stands. Nation. Uh, it is as well, the delivery justice for all. What we'd like to do, uh, less objection, uh, is put, uh, give Chip first with his list of things and, uh, that way he can go.
I appreciate that. Another meeting over.
We will, uh, we'll do that.
Much appreciated.
Come up here and, uh, have a seat or?
I'm good. I'll stand. I need the exercise. Thank you very much for hearing me early. Appreciate it. Um, and with your consideration and approval, I'm gonna kinda move the order of business you asked me to address. So I can cover everything. Um, I'd like to start with what I got most of the questions on, and that is the general code contract in progress we have. Um, most of you had a background on that, but for the new newer persons. General Code is an organization that will take our ordinances, land use ordinance, special amusement ordinance, campground ordinance, and they're, they have a system. We met them about a year ago in, uh, I guess, was it Augusta at the MMA meeting? And at that time, we knew we had challenges in a lot of places with our ordinance, as you all know. At that time, ADU, at that time, Jellystone, at that time, a bunch of things where there's a lot of conflicts in our ordinances and things. So we talked to them and, uh, they gave us a, uh, yeah, an understanding of what they do. And, um, at the same time, we met people from Augusta that, uh, turned us on to, uh, a grant, which was mostly for ADU, but we figured out a way to get it all done. And so this project is pretty much gratis to the town, thanks to the work of Bryce and myself. Um, and what they're gonna do again, from thirty thousand feet, is take our land use ordinance, which was just updated for ADUs and affordable housing, that version, and our other ordinances such as I just mentioned, uh, entertainment, uh, mobile homes. Uh, help me out, Bryce. There's four or five of them, which are gonna do. They're gonna take that, they have, uh, expertise with state of Maine, they have expertise with, you know, how ordinances work, um, how they're supposed to interact with different things, subdivision, that's with it also. Tear them apart, if a, you know, human look at, you know, what's conflicting, what's not there. They will not write ordinance, they will not write content, everybody should understand that. But they will make us aware where there's a weakness. Once they've done that, um, I anticipate they've been working on that since the first phase, which you asked about. Which is very simple questions about, they wanted to do the table of contents, which we approved. They wanted to know if we wanted to pay extra money for a, a bunch of things which we took a pass on. I think at that time, we had asked for one more ordinance to be included in on there. At that point, they had their direction and they said, look, we're probably not gonna be done till the end of the year. And so, you know, let us work, but before then, there will be certain times where they will give us a progress report, which I think should be coming up this fall sometime. And as they work, one of the big benefits of what they do is they're gonna be putting our ordinances and regulations online in a simple format where somebody can go online with a simple search, find out where they're supposed to go. And they also, thanks to one of our citizens a few years ago, Kathy, that did all the research on all our ordinances and figured out what their, or, uh, beginnings were and everything. And, uh, what's that?
Anne.
Anne Huntington. God bless her. Thank you. And they're gonna incorporate that too. So we have an idea where the basis for our regulation, everything comes from and where we go from there. I think they've, they've got a wonderful package they're proposing. In the middle of it, they're gonna pause, it'll be online for, you know, a committee that can look at it, review it and everything. We'll probably have a couple of public meetings. Um, at that time, I'll be looking for volunteers, uh, stakeholders from different areas in the town. And, you know, people that work here and go through it, make sure they're on the right track, and we'll probably do that a couple of times. And then at the end, we'll get a, a final product. Again, this is all paid for, right up to the final product, and I believe the first year. After that, there'd be a nominal fee of, I believe, like fifteen hundred dollars or something for hosting it and taking requests on certain updates. So this is what we're doing to try to address the, you know, the clues we have right now at ordinances. And hopefully discover where there are certain, you know, ordinances, regulations that run into each other. And as they identify that, we work with them how to update it. As you know, we had the update with our ordinance in June, when we had the town meeting, June?
June.
June. That, that fit into their timeframe, so they will be using the changes there. Anything else is gonna, um, probably either be put at the tail end of this project or incorporated as, you know, they go along. It's all up to us, how much you wanna spend, how much you wanna pay. I mean, we just want a good product to come out that we can all use and the town can use to, you know, understand the ordinances. Are there any questions on our general code? Let me put one more part in there too. That ten grand was mostly considered for the ADU i- situation, which they're working really hard to look at, you know, what we gave them, what's in our ordinance currently and make sure that it's all, cause it's a morphing thing, everything with the state morphs as they go along. And they're gonna help incorporate and clean that up a bit too. But, um, I forget where I was going with this. Um, they actually helped us out with some of the reviewing of the work we did. And that was as a benefit of working with them. They didn't normally do it, but it really helped out in getting our final product out, which took well over a year to do and a lot of input from a lot of people on the planning board. So that's, um, that's the general code situation. I have some copies. I sent you all the letters that we had. But I have a few copies of this if anybody's interested. This is the chapters that they put together. Um, if they got three copies, which you can all share. Um, and again, this is all, you know, a, a work in progress. Definitely nothing is in stone. It'll be done by a committee, the volunteers from different parts of the, you know, the comp, the, uh, the town, so again, highlight, just to make things better, bring them up to date, integrate them better, get better, you know, access to it for anybody that's into the code. And we're gonna work together on it. The best part is it can cost us a dime. So anyways, that's that.
Quick question, Chip.
Yes, I wish you could give me some questions.
Yeah, you're very familiar with what their proposal is, what they're supposed to deliver in your assessment, are they?
Absolutely. I think I one of those pieces I gave you that's incorporated it. And that has morphed a bit, as I said in the last review, there was another few ordinances that we asked to put in it, so. Yes, it's all laid out very well, so they accomplish what we want and we don't ask for more that would cost more.
Thank you.
Um, a couple of things. Uh, they are gonna do all of the ordinance we, we have that we've been able to put our hands on, correct?
All the ordinances that we've had that we can put our hands on. There's certain ones um, that just, yeah, they just, they're older and everything else, we were given a certain bandwidth that we could do. Most important was the land use ordinance. Then there was the, um, subdivision, um, and other things moved into it. With what's going on at Jellystone, we thought it was very important that they get the, um, RV, mobile park ordinance, whatever, which will morph as the new committee works on that too.
So will they be working on that now, or are they going to wait until we have a vote? So?
They will, they'll be working on the current version. And they have a method, methodology that works. Once the whole thing's done, they'll be able to integrate and do other things at a cost.
So it's not, it's not, uh, double costing us to work on that one, is it?
It might cost something at the end, yes. I mean, again, they made us a proposal, we agreed to it, we actually added some things to it. And so, you know, we can't keep on whatever. We'll work on it. Okay? Um, good people, they communicate well with me, so.
I've asked you some pretty specific questions that I know were really recent in it, in. Uh, so, uh, we can, we can just do this in the future.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, so that's general code. Any questions anybody has going down the road? Actually, I have a signed copy of their proposal, which was basically integrated, so. Um, that's the only one I have, so. Or you can keep it, it's on the computer, that's not a problem. Um. Next, um, how we did with the ADU thing, it was, uh, done, incorporated into the, uh, latest version of our land use ordinance. Um, thank you for your approval. Thank you for getting it in there. We got it in time. The state, uh, reviewed it, everything is in line, so that's been done. The reason I bring it up now is because we've had, I've had my office probably at least two calls a week with, how can I, you know, how can I do an ADU for a family member? How can I do an ADU, whatever, because now it's a state law. The other part of it is that we were very lucky to catch the end and get in there too, was they've completely redone what, um, you know, mobile homes, manufactured homes and, um, modular homes, all are the same thing now. They're all called manufactured homes. Um, and it's also opened the door for them to be allowed in every zoning district in town. So, you know, we've gotta be able to answer their questions on how, why, how they can do it. You know, why they can, can't do it and everything, and because of the work that was done, it's there. So hopefully we don't run into problems with the ADU czar that the, uh, Augusta has right now. And that'll probably happen at some point because, again, it's new and they have this infrastructure that they get final say on everything if necessary. And so, anyways, so that's, that's done. Um, then there's, you know, other issues that aren't minor, but I know T will be interested. We have other issues like, uh, what'd you call it, the junkyard on Tucker Road? Uh, we have a town member that seems to think he can run a auto junkyard, repair yard, whatever, and we bent over backwards to get him to work with us. It's not gonna work out. We have the, I have the town lawyer working on it right now. It's gonna come soon. Um, been very busy with these other things and other issues. But, yeah, he's, he's amassed a pile of, you know, things. What will happen probably in the next three weeks or so, I'll give it to, um, the lawyer, help me out.
Phil.
Phil. Phil, Phil Saucier. That's the official town lawyer. He couldn't work on this other issue because he's working with the other side. But Phil Saucier is the official town attorney. He will be taking my, uh, stuff. We had, uh, this individual served with a warrant by the local sheriff. And he will be getting a court date in Augusta for him to appear. It's gonna be amusing. Um, but if he settles before then, it's gonna save him a lot of money because once we do that, Sylvie Crewing fines weekly of over a thousand dollars. And so it behooves him to get serious with life. So that's one that we've been working very hard on. Um, due to neighbor interaction. There is the Brannigan area, which has been quiet for a while. Um, he calls me once a month to let me know what's been dragged out of there and what's going on. There's been issues with, you know, some of the people that were over there, some have left, some are staying. Um, we really have to watch how we work over there. I, at least I believe we have to work, watch how we work over there with, you know, the availability of housing, the availability of, what do you do with people that are injured and don't have anywhere to go? Um, I've just been trying to keep it, you know, online and keep him working on cleaning up the place. And I think it's been pretty, well, knock on, but I'm not jinxing it. It's been pretty quiet over there, but, you know, we are having communication. Um, and we have enough lawyer's bills right now and it's not been forgotten.
But you, you'd say that he has been doing, doing progress.
He's, he's removed the majority of his cars. His, um, the, the junk piles have gotten smaller, bigger, smaller, but they are, it is getting better. It's never gonna be perfect. He's doesn't have, you know, what to, but, you know, we're working to, with him as he, you and me being, and as long as he works with us, we'll keep working with him and try to get the situation, you know, static. Um, and then, let me see, general code, moratorium, Jellystone, Brannigan, to the, uh, hundred pound elephant in the room. Um, I was asked to, uh, address the, uh, Jellystone, um, Beaverbrook in, um, issue. Uh, what I'll say to you right now, I don't think that's my place to address the overall issue at this point. You all, um, you all assigned a committee to deal with that. I know that they've been working diligently on it. Um, I met with them a couple of weeks ago, um, just to review protocol. And I think that's what I'll basically do with you all, the protocol. Because I do understand there's a meeting tomorrow night for them to present in a public hearing, uh, their, their work, at which point they will give it to us as a planning board, not us, but, you know, the planning board to consider. Um, and the planning board will have a meeting, and if that goes satisfactory, they'll have a public hearing after that. Um, you know, they'll have the opportunity to see, you know, ask questions, see if there's more information they need. Um, so it's all getting distilled down for you all, okay? Um, legally, the planning board has up to four months. Once they get the package to get to you all, I don't anticipate it will take four months. But remember, our planning board meets once a month. And I anticipate that you'll get it way before four months, but that's, that's the, the long end of it. Um, once you all receive it, um, you will review it. And if you approve it, then it moves on to a town meeting at some point. Whether that's in a expedited one or next year, I don't know. That's why I'm not commenting. Um, I'm leaving that, and I think I expressed that to the, uh, moratorium group that that's for the planning board to deal with. I'm just a facilitator of the meetings, so. Um, being rather neutral on it, but that's the protocol that it is going forward, okay? Um, you know, where we stand with it all, um, Jellystone, uh, a son NG that owns the place. Um, has been kinda standing back. Occasionally they call me with a question and I give them when the different meetings are. Um, again, that's in progress. What's going on with them, I don't know. We have a lawyer, Jim Katsiakakis, who's been very good in helping us out to understand the whole process. Um, they have a lawyer in Portland also that is working on, um, you know, with their group in Miami and up in, you know, Michigan, wherever it is. Um, but, you know, it's been kinda quiet on the lawyer's ends too. Where it's going, I don't know. But I do know that we're working very hard to move on with the moratorium, whose purpose was to identify the weaknesses in our ordinance that brought this about. And they've done work on how to correct it. And again, I anticipate you all will get that sometime in the, uh, the fall, fall time, right? But, uh, details, it's not my job. I don't, you know, don't have it. Okay?
I assume that a lot of these things will be filled in soon anyway.
Uh, we can fill you in now, give you a little more detail if you'd like it.
Well, uh, let's, let's decide, is it best to do that now, or is it best to do that with the rumble, or are we still at? That's a return to the?
Just in terms of process, happy to fill you in and let you know where we're at.
All right, well.
Well, is Chip finished with his stuff?
Yeah, well, unless anybody has any questions on any of it, I'll be glad to answer. Um, I've given you the process, it's up to you where to go, what to do. And I thank you for your time. If I haven't answered certain questions, let me know and I will dig it up. I did send you all some of the stuff that I talked about tonight. If there's any specifically, call me and you know I'll get right back, okay? And I'm honored to work with you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Should we take, should we, uh, take it up now, or should we just return to our agenda?
If, if, if you're inclined to let them speak, you might wanna ask the people if you wanna make a motion on that. Or if you wanna stick with the agenda, go ahead and do that.
I just assume, let, let them, uh, speak if they can speak briefly, uh, and tell us quickly, uh, where things are, that would be great.
I agree.
Just really a quick procedural fill-in, so you all are completely up to date in terms of where we're at. Um, we had a meeting with, um, the co-enforcement officer with Chip on July twenty ninth, the advisory committee. We presented Chip and Ashley Bryce was there as well with the current work product that we had prepared. And Chip, again, was very clear in messaging to us that his role was not to give us substantive guidance and advice on the ordinance itself or changes to the ordinance. Um, he gave us a very good sort of roadmap in terms of the process that needed to be followed. So we had been following that process since then. What we did is we have prepared fi- what we consider to be final drafts of our, of the committee work. I won't bore you with all the work we did, but what we produced is, um, a proposed amended ordinance that is a clean version, so you can read and see what we propose the ordinance to be. We've included also a redline compare version, which shows you how the ordinance has changed from the existing one to, uh, what the proposed ordinance is. And we drafted a report that explains, um, what the committee's charge was, what the issues were that we identified, how we worked through the process and why we came to the conclusions that we came to. Um, we've now submitted all that to Andy Gorrell, um, and the planning board in advance of a meeting that will happen with them on August fifteenth. So the advisory committee will be meeting with the planning board at its next regularly scheduled meeting on August fifteenth. We're looking forward very much to that and to talking with them about what we see as the deficiencies in the ordinance and how we've addressed them. So we hope to have a very constructive meeting on August fifteenth. I skipped one step. We are actually having, as an advisory committee, a public, a public hearing for the committee, which is tomorrow night. So hopefully people will show up, um, we can share with them our work and product and, and they'll be able to give us input and comments that we can take into consideration as we move through the refining and, and drafting process.
That's great. Uh, so where and when tomorrow?
Yes, so, right, one thing I do wanna say is that the, the documents that Ted mentioned, um, our report and, and the drafts are all, um, on the town website, so you can get those.
It's seventeen pages with the, with all the, uh, changes, right?
I zoomed the number of pages.
It's not, it's not a secret, and we'd love for you guys to take a look at it. I mean, we're not to you yet, but the, the report, I think, is very helpful in explaining what we did and why we did what we did.
And so there are different kinds of public hearings. The public hearing tomorrow is a less formal public hearing. It's really a discussion and question and the answer. You know, people show up and have questions. Um, then, with then, as Ted said, August fifteenth, oh, tomorrow at six thirty here.
Okay.
Um, then August fifteenth, we meet with the planning board just to do a presentation and to talk, have a discussion with them. They will then determine when their formal public hearing, when the planning board formal public hearing will happen. And, um, so I don't have a date for that yet. That'll happen after the fifteen.
Lloyd, uh, I've read their report and their ordinance. I, I, I read it quickly, so I don't have any opinion on the substance of the ordinance, but I can tell you it was very thorough. And the report was thorough and it reflected a lot of work.
Yes.
Good. Any of us gonna be present tomorrow?
We're gonna try to.
Okay. Don't know. I might try to make it. Might try to make it.
I do have one, one thing that, um, when you get to, um, approving minutes from the last meeting, you put in the minutes, um, I think it's the reads that are recorded that we researched two thousand and ordinance is from like two thousand towns. It's supposed to be over, over two dozen, not, not two thousand, so just.
I was trying to recall that.
Yeah, I was like.
I think that my mouth would have drawn.
That many. So just, yeah.
Okay, uh, are we good on that subject? I think we're great. Uh, thank you for all of our labor. And, uh, we look forward to, uh, tomorrow or following week. And now we return to the normal, uh, that. I noticed that I went by the conflict of intersection. Does anyone have any conflict interest respecting anything on this list? Meeting minutes, uh, consider approving the minutes of the meeting for July second. Uh, do I have a motion?
I reckon we should change to two thousand and two dozen.
Yeah, that was July seventh, second, okay.
No, that's July.
That was July sixteen.
Okay.
So for July second, I'm moving, uh, uh, accept the minutes from July second.
Second.
Second. I'm moving the second, uh, all the way. Okay. How's your, how's your arm, uh, by the way? Yeah, how's your arm? You doing?
Hanging in there.
Okay. Uh, consider approving the select board meeting minutes for July sixteenth, which I was not telling. So, uh.
I move we, uh, accept the meeting minutes for July sixteenth with the correction, um, two thousand, uh, different towns to instead read over two dozen towns.
Very good. Uh, second?
Second.
All, all in favor? Very good.
Lloyd, I have a point to make before this.
Oh, awesome.
For the warrant. I don't know, just for, to keep it clean with this agenda, you might wanna make, uh, it's agenda item eight A before the warrant because it's included in the warrant. And you're voting on what you're funding.
Oh. In other words, we're, we're approving thirty seven hundred eighty-four dollars in addition to? I'm not clear.
No, it's not in addition, it's within that warrant, but I think it would be cleaner to approve or not approve the use of the funding before we approve the whole warrant.
Oh, okay. Why, why would you do that now since we're already? That could. Um, any questions about this proposal?
Yeah, what are, what are we getting?
A whole new website, something that's easier to work with.
Really?
Yeah.
Who's, who's?
And it's Town Cloud, they're right, they're local, they're out of Maine. Um, towns all over, uh, South Paris, Durham. A lot of people are switching to them and they've been really easy to work with and actually the template for the agenda, it's their website plus an agenda software, so everything is tied right in and the price to renew August first for our old website tripled. And, I mean, this, so this is a three-year contract, so.
This is an annual or a per year amount?
That's a three-year contract, so it locks us in for three years.
And it covers three years worth of services, or is that?
That's what I'm asking. Yeah, so we pay this amount.
Once.
Once.
Where it locked in for three years. Correct.
So, um, do we then have to do all the work for moving what we have now over to these guys?
Nope, they actually have a, they call it a sandbox setup, so that's what I'm trying to, on my Mondays, I've been really trying to devote time to it just because it's a lot, and we have a thirty-day grace period with the current provider we have. So we're looking to get stuff switched over and just the use of the, to, um, you know, the innards of the website that I and Stan, who would know, had a big issue with. It's just not simple and not easy. It's really not a joy. So this is, um, from what I see, it's been great, and there's other towns and, um, yeah, it, it's, I think it's gonna be great for transparency-wise, you know, to get stuff updated on the website and the ease of it.
Thank you.
And it's fully funded by ARPA?
It can be, yeah.
So town doesn't have to contribute anything?
Correct, because ARPA funds need to be spent by the end of the year and we're, we have under thirty, a little under thirty thousand dollars left.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion on this point?
I, I move we go and, uh, accept this proposal and hire the people to read you the website.
I second it.
That seems like different than the suggestion, which is to prove the use of the ARPA funds?
We have to prove the use of the ARPA funds, cause then it.
I'm talking about the wording.
Yeah, okay.
Um.
Go ahead.
So I.
Draw my motion.
I, I move that we, uh, approve use of ARPA funds in the amount of three thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars eighty cents for upgrading the town website.
Second. Discussion.
Discussion, anyone? Okay. Good, so that's been done, and now we can probably consider warrant number. Who, who will give us a?
Uh, I can, I, I move we accept, uh, accounts payable number four in the amount of sixty-two thousand five thirty-three and in course cents.
Any questions? Or if I have a motion? Okay, second, second. Discussion, questions?
So on this, you'll see the largest sum would be the, the check for fifteen thousand two dollars and seven cents. That was our June transfer station bill to Reed Field. There also is a seventeen thousand nine hundred five dollar and ten cent um, check that was made. That was for Harris Local Government. That's Trio, that's our software we use in the office.
That's a year, is it?
That's a year's worth.
Are all of these in the budget, or are any of these, uh, unbudgeted items?
The current, these are all in the budget. The currently, these are all in the budget.
Yeah.
We're not overspent yet.
So, all in favor? Good.
Will we uh approve the select word, oops, wrong line. Move me approve payroll number five in the amount of sixteen thousand five fifty four. Dollars and sixty three cents.
Um question, question, uh for discussion?
I think there's a correction in your motion, you said five fifty four and it's seven fifty four.
Oh, did I, I'm sorry, so sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty four dollars and sixty three cents.
Okay, good.
Didn't you need to restate the whole thing?
No, no, that that's good.
Okay. Um that's just regular payroll. And that's made up of the town employees and the lab rec center employees.
Okay, great. Uh quick, yeah, discussion? All in favor? Okay, my B is is adopted. Now I take it we are done with A, B, and C of the items under whole business. Update on internet expansion now. Our specialist on internet, or you know enough about it to be able to say?
I mean, it was a resident request, it was an email sent to Trent.
Right, okay.
Trent is not here, so I think. I mean, the the resident, I believe, is in the audience, I don't know if he wants to present his questions or, I mean. It's just, I think, essentially a question how this board feels about. The internet expansion and what? If I recall, there was in conversation about it being on the November ballot.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
Yeah, my name is Mike Clark, I wrote the email to Trent and Bryce. I'm just looking for an update on where the town stands on the internet for the town. Last discussion was a couple of months ago at the select board meeting. And I think Bryce was correct, there was some discussion about putting it on the November ballot, so I guess that's my question, is that? The intent, is that what's going to happen?
I think that that we need to do some more um. Some more research on this, I did hear that Mount Vernon might be getting Phidium in theirs.
Well, I think the last time it was discussed, I think it was Reedfield who was getting high speed internet. And the company that was going to do this reached out to the town of Wayne and asked if we wanted to join in that endeavor. And it could be a certain cost and that cost was reviewed back in April.
It was, I believe, about five hundred thousand dollars that we would have to be paying Phidium.
So the question is, is it going to go on the November ballot as a referendum question or as a question to the town? As to whether they want to vote it in or not?
So I was in the audience for that meeting and there was a lot of discussion and the board decided. That it should not be decided by a group of five, it should be put to the town. Voted and determined it would go on the. Uh November ballot for the wider audience to weigh in on direction, so. Unless there's significant new or changed information, I would wonder why we would change that decision.
Yeah.
And there's steps that need to be taken to get it on the November ballot. There are timeframes that need to be met so that it can meet that.
We have two meetings. More. And at the second of those meetings, we need to be sending any referendum items to Kathy. Uh so, uh whatever we're going to do, if anything. The warrant article has to be drafted and we have to uh send it to Kathy. Uh by our uh first meeting in. October, September, I haven't written. Uh what I recall was. It was brought up. About the possibility of the town uh participating in this. And putting it on the town meeting. In the June town meeting. And some of the folks, it's never gonna be decided by us five because it's a town meeting type thing. And uh some of the folks said, no, the town meeting is too poorly attended, let more people vote on it and put it off until November. Uh you know, one thing. That we should think about is with the. With the current uh situation of. The mail that everybody got recently in the in in the town budget. Uh number one. Do we think this group, even though I think the internet's good, it's. It's a good time to be doing extra cost. Uh I don't know if we have any information on a bond issue, I know that was discussed briefly, as I recall, I was in the audience just like Hazel was. Um and uh. So we should decide whether we think it's something that's good for the town, given our current situation and we also should consider that, given the recent mail. Is there gonna be much of an appetite out there for additional spending? Uh on the November, although we could always put on a referendum and if people like it, they vote yes, if they don't like it, they vote no.
That was I thought was the intent.
I do think that it'd be wise to consult with an internet specialist who serves on the board. By next meeting and then draft up. Could you, could you do that, Bryce, or craft a warrant article, warrant that will be solid? Uh and does that need to be, does does Kathy check that with a lawyer after it, if deadlines passed and we got, it need to be lawyered first?
There's one need to be word.
We probably wanna do, get it before.
Yeah, they they want to look at.
I can work with MMA and then work with our lawyer when it's.
I I think that would be something we could probably get help with MMA.
For sure.
And so there's no reason to pay our lawyer.
Yeah.
If 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 MMA will take a look at it. Uh and uh we should consider uh. Whether, and and this is for the purpose, we could, we could do that be- before November, at some, at some point in time. I think we should have a. A a public forum.
Yes.
Where somebody explains. What this would mean to the average taxpayer. And if Phidium says internet's gonna be a lot cheaper, explain what that is also. So people have, when they make their decisions, if the if finances is an issue, to know what exactly this means on my tax bill and. What does it mean on my internet bill? And we don't have to do that before. Uh before the meetings that I'm talking about, we can do that, we can do that before the, before the election.
So we really should have somebody in here from Phidium, it would be good to get a representative from the BEED program too for the state. To have them talk about what uh possibilities are. At the public forum, so people know what.
Well, if if it's on, I'd let it off, people can vote yes or no, I mean, if we decide, if we decide we want to withdraw, we can, but.
But we have decided that we will.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, fine. Okay.
So, so next week. Uh or next, not next week, next meeting. Uh do we wanna have, try to have a, have a something drafted?
Yes.
You have it something.
Tell me, I'll do.
Next meeting, we need something drafted. In the following meeting after that, we have to vote, yes, we wanna send that to Kathy.
And what I'll do is I'll get ahold of Phidium and find out what their. What the number is exactly, so we have that number that I'll get for you.
And I had some uh budgetary figures from the bank or just anger scogging for a rough estimate, just the cost of.
Good, anything further on this topic? Wonderful, uh discussion on hiring new town manager process, uh that's your.
Yes, of the list. Um, two things, uh I sent out an email to the uh. The committee that we had going last spring, uh many people got back to me, they're saying that they could be part of this or. That they were ready to bow out because of other requirements. Um so I believe later in this meeting, we're going to be recommissioning. Uh various committees, so I would think that we would want to add uh these people. To the list of the committees that we've got here, because I've got their uh permission to go ahead and become. Uh or continue as part of these committees. And then um, you know, between you and me, I'd like to get, I'd like to invite them to a meeting ASAP.
Yep, and we need to um refresh their charge.
Yes, exactly. Which is what we would do tonight as part of our commission and then bring that to them.
Uh yeah, I think when we. Whichever point is appropriate in the agenda, we have to determine what that um what that charge is.
Right, right. I I printed your email, yes, but I didn't.
Okay. I haven't been involved in this previously in any aspect, so if I may ask things that everybody else knows, you kind of be nice to me. And don't be upset. Um, the uh, I sent out some um excerpts from MMA's package. Uh at the end of that, it says that MMA offers a wide range of personnel services, some fee based and some dues funded to assist towns and endeavors like we have. Have we, have we checked with them to see what those services are?
I had an extensive conversation with a couple of people there, a couple of times. Um basically, uh we're good to go in our committee as we've been, as we've been going along. They will help us put together a final um advertisement, should we choose to do that? And then we'll publish it, should we choose to uh broaden a search, um they'll do it throughout New England. For a modest fee of basically the labor charges that it would take to do that.
So Henry, the committee actually worked extensively um. Through their, through their meetings um with materials from MMA, uh researching other towns, um looking at sort of the. The local area, um looking at job descriptions, uh and where we stole that was in discrepancies between the. Ordinances and which dictate the responsibilities, so that's why we, why we paused, but we. Uh we basically mothballed everything and said we will come back to it, we just need to look at the charge and see where we pick it up, but. We have a lot of the uh, a lot of the materials, thank you for sending them, we can double check and make sure you didn't surface something new, but I think we have. Think we have a lot of the materials.
We, I built a grid that was um, that had all the towns that the the MMA kind of groups with us. Um they basically have the same land values, uh for the most part, um some are smaller, some are larger. Uh and they explain who does what and what they get paid, so I have a whole grid that it shows us all of that.
Okay.
Well, what to?
Yes, and so that was part of what we were.
Okay, and is that somewhere that? We can look at it?
I can get you, I don't think I ever published it, but I have copies of it, sure.
And what is the timeframe for the committee to do whatever it's going to do?
We haven't established that yet because we paused.
Uh the the um. All the advertisements that I've seen out there seem to be out on the street for anywhere from like about four and a half months. And so uh, wh- whenever we have what we need to to. To go forward, if we're going to go that route, it's gonna be another four and a half months before we ever get anything in to look at from candidates.
Uh.
Is that the?
You may know better than me, but it sounds like with some of the work that the subcommittee was doing. Um we are very close to being able to put together a file. Draft of uh what we want. In our job description.
Is that the same thing as the uh charge that you? That you measured? You know, recharge you, you had a person like this.
We charge, the the committee is charged for putting together a uh job description. And then if we want the committee to do interviews, the committee is then charged with doing interviews and or a subcommittee. And then so go from there.
It's their deliverables that we're gonna talk about, what we want them to bring to us, to the level of.
The specific work, yeah.
Okay, well.
I just had a comment, just for this process, this is kind of. It's along the same lines, whatever this process may be, I've been kind of in touch with. Uh Jessica, our prior tax collector, I took her position, she works in Fayette, she's will, she um has Fridays off, she's willing to come in. Cause I, depending on how long this is, I really need a day to devote to straight town manager things. She's willing to come in, but I obviously needed to come to the board first with that.
So I think that's a side issue, you're, I think you're asking a good question, how long does the process take, and in my experience, hiring is not a quick. Um, do you wanna? Do you want it right or do you want it quick?
Well, I want it done.
It can be a lengthy process, um and I think what's, what's coming to the board is in the interim, should we look for administrative? Should we look for some administrative help because. Um you know, with Bryce, especially with the mail that went out and. And um you know, like he has no time to do all of the things on his plate.
Okay, I don't think it's been brought up as a group of uh with all of us, but we, I think that there have been some. Thoughts about bringing somebody else in as an administrative assistant.
For death, front desk stuff.
Yeah.
Tax collector procedures I can handle, it's the registering vehicles, I need to take a break.
On the committee charge. Uh how and it's, how important is a city manager contract? Our contract with the city manager.
How important is it, I would say it's paramount.
Okay, so the, should we have a contract? At the time we go out with our solicitation. That's been the by our request the people to send us there to apply for this job, should we go out with, should we have a contract? By that time. That they say this is what the contract is going to be, do you wanna do that or not to the, to the, to the applicant?
So in my opinion.
Yeah.
The elements of the job description that they're applying for should be in the contract. So, but the details of the contract, I don't think we would share at hiring time because those. Well, first of all, we have a contract, we have a drop con- uh contract in place that time is used.
But I think that was much more built off the last one, you have a very good point because. If if we're interviewing, they're going to wanna know benefits and all those things and that's outside of the scope of a job description.
Was was the contract an issue? During, during, I I don't know what it, the issues were previously. Was was our, was our contract good and one that we were happy with?
My opinion is.
And I think it was also written based on another job description.
Okay.
So as a board, maybe we can take a look at the contract and and decide if we need to um amend the. My charge to the committee, but that seems like a more narrow focus.
I I would think that we would start with putting a job description together and probably give it to an attorney to write a contract for us.
Well, okay, let's let's back up a minute. Who will do what things by what dates? All of the various things you mentioned, are you gonna predict, is your subcommittee gonna draft the charge? Or is someone else gonna draft the charge?
So the process is, we draft the charge for the subcommittee, so we tell them what it is, the deliverables we want from them. They go forth and do that work and bring it back.
Would you be willing to say? Five weeks and we would be done?
End of September?
Yeah.
Think that's a reasonable goal.
I think we should.
I don't think there's a lot of work left.
I don't think so either, and I'm, and we need to make a commitment and we need to decide that, so.
So.
And and that's stretching it for me, but I I also wanna be realistic.
So what you're saying is that we can have a draft charge? And at all supplementary documents? In one package at what time?
By September thirtieth, the committee should be done with their work.
As articulated in the judge.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, the the charge is the, it's it's our instructions to the committee about what we'd like them to do.
Right.
So when can that be done?
We're doing that tonight, aren't we?
We should do that tonight.
All right, that's what I'm trying to get. And who's gonna write that? Is there a draft?
Email, she had some.
I don't think I can send file. So. We determine the judge tonight, we appoint the committee, we give the committee until the end of September to do the work, which is a. Elements of writing the job post, well, I'm just, we haven't agreed this, but I'm thinking key deliverables are the job posting. The job posting, key um attributes for the for the town manager, what we would look for in a town manager. Potential interview questions so that you can probe how well each candidate can address those. Key attributes and potentially some reference questions, so that we can actually uh validate that they're. The key, the top performers are how we expect them to make. Now, there's there's some stuff in the, thank you Bryce for bringing the municipal offices guide, there's a little bit of uh recommendations and process. In the municipal guide that I just got tonight and I recommended that um share that with you, I don't know if you about that yet.
Yeah.
There's a lot.
So I think we want to uh we want to map to that and make sure that our process is sound. Um but I think the committee could deliver the majority of that stuff in a month, six weeks.
So by September fifteenth?
Uh uh well, we said end of month, I think, we said they'd meet.
I was I was thinking about them, yes.
Right, we don't wanna, yeah. So remember that we need one of the two of us at their meetings, as facilitators, one or both of us. Um so I think that was why we meet every two weeks.
Yes, and one reason that that Bryce and I were doing, not Bryce, Trent and I were doing it together was because we both both knew that. Neither of us were going to be available every time.
Right, and full disclosure, I'm going from the dark side, I'm going from the committee. And Trent Trent stepped down as the select board representative and I stepped into Trent's very large shoes.
Everything will be fine.
Yeah, uh the. One of the things that uh I don't know the the answer to on this MMA material. It says some some, we have some flexibility with respect to the to the statute. I'm not sure what items, and I think it had to do with who supervises, for example, does the town manager supervise the fire chief?
Yes.
You know, when uh is that going, that's going to be uh.
I wish Trent was here tonight because he can articulate this really well. The step, the state statute has got um the sort of the chain of command and who was to do in it. And it's uh unless it's superseded by town ordinance. And we have town ordinances relative to the fire chief, treasurer.
I think that was it, but we but both of those have to be updated, so it's relatively flexible. But we need to update the other ordinances.
Well, I think what we need to do i- as a as a suggestion is. Decide what like this, this whole thing goes into effect at the next town meeting. Is this the the town manager plan? I think we need to decide what we can change from the from the listing in the statute. And uh what changes we want to do and then put those in administrative ordinance. That gets that gets worked on uh and it's get gets put to the town at the next town meeting.
I agree.
Okay.
So I think in the short term. We need to determine the. Um whether or not the fire chief and the treasurer ordinances need to be updated.
They do, I believe, they're old and they're not, they're not as clear as we might make them now.
So that's a process to do that, including conversation with presumably those individuals, um the board. And.
Yep. That could be contentious.
I I mean, I don't think I don't think that the the substance of them will change a lot. I think it's basically the wording just needs to get tightened up, if I recall, I don't know.
Let's let's back up again, we're supposed to write a chart.
Right.
Oh, you're ready to do that right now, uh that's, presumably that's a brief, brief document. Uh you guys, tell us what the charge should be, is this them?
My recommendation is we charge them with the job posting, the key attributes or criteria. Uh potential interview questions and potential reference questions. And we could also charge them with.
Developing a subcommittee for interviews.
Uh yeah, cause I don't think the whole. We need to determine what, I think that's a select question, how many representatives we would want, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that on them until we can say. How many of them we want?
Yeah, I would say that that the eventuality of of uh choosing some subcommittee members as the select board uh directs.
So recommendations for interview committee members.
Yes.
Now, the hiring a new town manager is squarely a responsibility of the select board.
Yes.
So this advisory committee, whatever we charge them, I think should be advised the select board. And make recommendations regarding.
Right, yes.
And then we need to decide what we want to do of those recommendations, maybe they we want to modify them. Maybe we want to adopt them, but there should not be a situation where this committee is determining the job description. Or this committee is determining anything, the committee needs to be making recommendations to us.
Right.
It's our job to do that.
Yeah, I like your language, I I intended that, but.
And when it comes to, I would, I would like to see this charge not say anything about interviewing because I don't know. If that's a committee responsibility or or what, I think I think an advisory committee should advise us.
I'm.
And uh but it's, you know, it's it's whatever, whatever the group decides, I'm in for it, that's fine.
Let's let's get it, let's let's get our draft of this of this document, what is it gonna say? If you will, I missed you in the wrong.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Pico Brown. Um firstly, I'm very pleased that the discussion that has gone along here. Most of us believe that it's been way too long, um and I was getting a full town manager on board. And um letting the people do, like letting the manager do the appropriate work for Wayne. So I I'm pleased with this discussion. Um unfortunately, um the question was asked by, I believe, by Hazel. You want it done right or do you want it done quickly? Uh unfortunately, the answer is both. Uh we need it, it's been how many months now since we've had a?
Two months.
Yeah, it basically it's it's been too long and you're all working on it. Um I know there's work to be done, I encourage you to uh all jump into this and and get it all. And I thank you for uh moving along, thank you.
Thank you. Now, who's who's gonna?
Do we have the charts that you gave them before?
Yeah, but it's uh it's. Um. Okay. But um I think part of it is is passe and part of it was a little loose, like. I don't know, help with the hiring to me was a little bit, uh to your point, it's not their responsibility to hire, that's. Um so I I my my suggested deliverables or um outputs that we want from the committee are a bit more specific. Um delivered as recommendations, not things we can't change. Um so again, it's around the job posting, the key criteria, the interview questions, reference questions and. Um somebody added something.
I I how about this, we make a list. We're gonna have a special meeting within a week, correct?
Yeah, it's Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, we have to have a special meeting for the assessment or the whatever you call it.
Tax commitment.
Tax commitment, uh can we add this, can we add finalizing this as an agenda item to that special meeting? And uh maybe uh uh if we make a list tonight, I'm happy to try to write it up. And uh and I will uh email a work product out prior to that meeting. And then we can have that as another agenda item to say this is the charge.
That's a good way to do it.
Okay.
That's like, what we'll do is appoint the committee tonight and then move along with the charge next week.
So I'll send you an email with my.
I I got the one that you already sent, and are there anything else other than other than Hazel's items that we want to put on this?
I'm gonna go back and look our at our original chart.
And if you could email me that also, that would help me.
I will, yes, certainly.
That's what we want, so there's there's discussion settled down.
Yeah, I think so.
I think we did change in this stream because we realized that we didn't have the ordinance that we could use.
All right, uh we have a review board. But you well, it sends you to review and consider appointments now, uh that was is the list of. Page after page after page of committee members.
Yeah, and so this is the the list I have so far with three vacancy filled filled from. Uh I think last meeting you wanted me to bring forward some recommendations.
Okay.
Right.
Uh at the same time, we've got a change, a last minute change in this, in the uh conservation commission would be elected, correct? Which is that um Chris Jones has had their withdrawal in the committee.
That's in here, so that shows the vacancy, but we need to get this on the books so then we can fill those, so.
Okay, anything else uh?
Well, I just, I mean, we've heard the names, MT Clark and Laura Briggs, they both had um come forward for the appeals board. As Henry had stated, and um. Uh kind of within the last week, Paula Nersessian had come forward. Uh uh for the conservation commission.
Good, uh do we have this committee of that we're discussing on that list?
That's.
Not, but I have the names here.
Okay, so I go to get a look at them.
Um yes, what I'd like to do is just read them out so that they can be put in the minutes and that we can commission them.
Are we just doing the vacancies or do we have to do this entire list?
It would be just the vac- just the vacancies.
The new years.
This is how it was done in the past, as I found it, there are some members' terms that did renew, I mean technically these yearly committees. You're just roll over, yeah, they roll all over, so you're technically doing all them as well, I think that's kind of why it's lumped together.
What are the the names? You want to read it in?
Oh, for the hiring committee.
Yes.
Hiring committee, uh MT Clark. Ford Stevenson. Ken Spalding. And Betsy Clark.
That's a good committee.
Yes, it's a good size.
Good size of committee.
Yes, it's a good size.
Okay, now you want a motion uh that we uh, you want a move that we uh. We uh.
We approve that, the hiring committee as named by Marianne.
Okay, second discussion, no? Hey, all favor? Good, then we want to move to approve the entire roster submitted by by the select by like.
Move to approve the town of Wayne's select board appointments effective July first that Bryce has appended to our paperwork tonight.
Yes.
I'll send them that.
Discussion.
Yeah, can you just recap, Bryce, the names you just gave, are they on this?
They are, so everything's up to date, so the vacancies that show are accurate and Kathy and I will work to find people. And we'll bring obviously them forward along their name along for you guys to appoint, we'll update this list.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All for favor? I'll say excellent, all right, uh we are now under trouble about supplementing the ordinances of the forward market committee from the town.
That was, that would be me, I had spoken with the lawyer on this and it still, it needs to be tabled. I thought he kind of came at me at last minute and because it's not its own separate entity, it's not, you know. It falls under the town umbrella, so it really.
Okay, so you have to table this thing.
Yeah.
Very good, uh supplement invatements. None, town manager report, uh road project.
So we have some road projects going on, uh if anybody's been on Walton Road, Berry Road, um some shoulder work, we've had. Uh from the year's worth of plowing, we haven't done any shoulder work, so the water doesn't ex- uh shed off the road. It hits the berm of sand from four or five plus years and runs down the road, so that's been a big issue. So they've um started to grade the shoulders, just this weekend will be a good test to see um. You know, just have that water shed off because it's eroding up under the pavement in spots. Um we still have that, the paving projects on the books for late September, that would be Innis Ridge Road. Would be a total job um to grind it up and put a base down. As well as the hill section of Old Winter Road is gonna get shimmed on road. And um so those are all um out there, the timing's not the best. But we're still trying to get it in with the within cold weather, that does bring in kind of, you'll see a CH Stevenson invoice in front of you. While we're paving Innis Ridge, we really should be digging up and upgrading our culverts. And that was something um that needs to be done with my time constraints. It's probably a project that should be bid, I haven't had the time, this is a quote from CH. I obviously can't act upon this myself because it is over the purchasing policy, so. Um I'm bringing it forward to the board to see their thoughts, if you guys. The the thought is, if you prefer, I do put this job out to bid, it might push the whole paving project to spring.
Um and if you use one way or another on it.
Are are all the culverts necessary, are all the, are all of them in the current paving projects that you described? All these.
Yeah, there's twelve, yeah, there, and they're all on Innis Ridge Road, just because we don't want to put fresh pavement down and have to dig up a culvert. So it's uh.
So this is above your normal spending limit, but it's um really an emergency to.
To get it.
To get it done so that we can continue with the road committee, uh the road work, which I believe was a commitment to the town when we. Uh put that money into the budget. This fall, so um.
Is it, I mean, do you do you anticipate if we put this up to bid that we would have a huge. Opportunity to save a lot of money or to do, you know, a much better quality job, I mean.
And the work that I've had done by CH so far, so far has been qualities, me the thing I think really is with them being right in Wayne. If there's an issue.
Did you ask anybody else if they could do it?
I have not. I can, it's just it's gonna push things back, it's just um.
Seems like it's more important to get the work done by the quality, I'd like to make a statement, by the way. I have no financial or management interest in this company, but I do have the same last name, but I have absolutely zero um. Connection to it, um so if you um see, I I see no conflict of interest in that. But if you'd like me to to not comment, then please let me know.
Yes, I would, uh Bryce, why don't we pick a couple of these and see if we can get somebody to come and give us bids on it? Or propose, just how, what what you quote for doing this? Pick three or four.
Yep.
And see how they compare, and if it looks like that this is a fair and reasonable price for the work, then go with it. And if they, and if you get, and don't talk to them about this, just just ask how much for this culvert, pick three or four.
I have an Excel.
Four and see how it works out, and and if there's a big difference, then maybe, you know, maybe we should know that before we agree to to. To go with it, if that if that won't, if that can be done without seriously delaying the whole project.
Yeah, I think I have an Excel sheet with all these culverts on and what needs to be done to them, I don't know what the turnaround time will be.
Well, and if they can't come out and give you quotes, they can't come out and give you quotes, we have to go back.
I can try to, I can try to get that, maybe we could tack that on to next week's meeting, just to.
How soon do you need a decision?
Uh by next week, I would say.
If we can get a couple, if we can get some information for next week, that's great and.
Make the decision.
Yeah, in one way or another, we'll make the decision next week.
Yes, you should, you could pick the three biggest, maybe.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Where you leave this under, can I ask if you take a look at the paved section of Lads Row, there are some greedy potholes. It's gonna be good to get them filled.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Now, okay, Tom Andrew fourth world project, you're a good lab rec financial.
That we, I know their ad hoc committee had their first meeting. I had stopped in, they were just initially started.
I wasn't able to make it, I'm sorry.
No, totally fine. So that ball is rolling at least.
Okay, good. Board member reports, anyone? This mentions the dam. I'd like to say that just recently, in the last couple of days, we've been advised that there's a dramatic decrease in transparency on on the lake. Now, I noticed that at the at the land, at the at the beach by the boat landing there, but I did notice it at the state. At the state boat landing on up on one thirty-three. Uh, so I take it that that number one is almost always the deepest place in the line, and if so, that's pretty serious, so. The water quality is bad, it's not gonna get better. And we are various parties meeting on that. We're gonna talk about parts of it Thursday morning, right? Uh, and just re-increases the degree of importance of the place on that.
Is this the same kind of amount of limit as we've had the last?
Probably.
Yes. I can give a quick update. So, yeah, it's it's very unhappy news. The latest clarity reading at the Station One Deepwater on Andersgagen Lake is one point seven six, don't quote me, but under two meters. The standard, DP standard for nuisance algae bloom is two meters. We're clearly below that. The lake is in Bloom status now. Uh, notifications by Thirty Mile have gone out to all appropriate parties, including Wayne, Leeds, the campgrounds. Um, I, as of the last time I checked, and I know how busy you are, I think you got, the town, Wayne got a notification.
We got it.
It would be good to post that on the website, just so that people are aware of it.
Yeah.
It is, it is a very unhappy situation. The lake is not looking good.
Very good, okay.
And it's early.
Board member reports, public comments? Any public comments?
I have one that is more promising. So the the board may recall that there was a a community meeting for the community for the climate resilience grant program. It was very well attended. Henry was there, there were a lot of people there, it was a lot of interest, and I thought it went really well. That's the good news. When a single town applies, the maximum grant allocation that a single town is 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 eligible to receive is fifty thousand dollars. So we're going through that cycle now. I think there will be, there is a committee that's been formed to to draft a grant proposal for Wayne for this fall, for this cycle. There will be future cycles. The way the program is set up is that if two towns submit a proposal jointly, the amount that you that, you know, you're eligible for that kind of a grant increases to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We, many people have made informal efforts to reach out to Leeds to to Leeds has not, is not participated. Many people have made informal efforts to reach out to Leeds, to advise them of the program, to solicit interest by Leeds in getting involved in the program, so that then perhaps Wayne and Leeds could do a joint grant. The most obvious candidate would be the Dead River and the Dead River Dam. I'm begging anybody on the select board, is there anyone who would be willing to make a call to the appropriate person in Leeds, the select, the head of the select board? Bryce, if you could make a phone call to the, to to your counterpart in Leeds. We really want to do whatever we can.
Who is the chair of their select?
I have no clue. I I don't know. All I know is informal efforts have not gotten anywhere.
Bryce and I will handle this, we'll handle. Okay, anything further? Yes.
Just a comment. I know Bryce is really busy. I know everybody's working shorthanded, but just a point of reference, there are no select board meeting minutes posted on the website since last August, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, my goodness.
They're in the office. I can post them this week. I can try.
Well, is it easier up the new system?
It will be, yeah, I mean, but we'll still upload the old ones, but we have a binder filled that I I guess I can.
Wait, wait till the new system.
Is that something that I can come in and do? Can you just say, say, do this?
It's the uploading part. You have to do it individually, but.
Is that something that you can say, do this, and I could sit there and do it?
I could attempt to, but I struggle with the website, so.
Yeah, I know.
But when would the new one be ready?
By the end of the month.
Let's put it up. No, let's not do double work. I think you got enough to do.
Yeah. Wait till the end of the month. Yes.
About the internet question in November, the minutes aren't posted, but the agendas with the previous month's minutes when in some cases are on the website. And in the first April meeting, the motion was to remove the internet question from the town meeting in June. And with the, within minutes, say it's with an eye towards the November ballot, so. I I don't know if that constitutes an actual decision to based on the minutes. Or whether you need to make that motion again at some point.
I think that was.
It's on the April second meeting minutes that you get to by having to go to the agenda, go back to various agendas, then five minutes and hoping, but Ken is right. It does say we're we're question on the June twenty twenty-four, barring with an eye towards the November twenty twenty-four.
For this bunch, that's a, that qualifies, that qualifies as a. All right, anything further? Then you're done. Thank you for coming.